If you've been with us quite a while, you did a great job. This time we'll need a motion to accept the consent order for the regular commission meeting on eight, eighteen, two thousand and fifteen. We have a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thursday. Any others discussing anything? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most of the passes five votes. All right. Bill? Bill? Our brand-new Port Saint Joe redevelopment director. He's getting his feet wet.
Good evening. I do have an update on a few projects. And first of all, like I said, I'm very excited about this new position. I'm really excited about working with the people downtown and making things better. And I'm very happy to be working for the board.
Glad to have you, Bill.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It has been a first couple or three, it's been a little bit rough, getting familiar with everything, but it's going good, getting more and more every day with figuring things out, but it's been fine. For the Firdat project over in Washington, Jim, we finally had that signed. I think Public Works will try to install it this week, so we can try to get that reimbursement from the state. It shouldn't take but a couple of weeks. I think that's what Mike had to wait, just a couple of weeks, and get that funding back from the state. We also have the approved obligated funds for the open-air information center on Fourth Street and Ninety-Eight. That's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars from USDA. I spoke with them this week, and they said that probably looking at two months, but maybe as much as three to go out and bid for that project. But I do have plans in my office, and by the way, my office is now in City Hall. If anyone wants to come see me there. But I do have plans for that project on Fourth Street and Ninety-Eight. I've already showed some people that's in the businesses in the area, and they're very excited about it. And I'm meeting with the engineer actually next week, from Little John Engineering, if he's coming next Thursday. So if one of you guys, as one of the DRA board members, or anybody else that wants to be part of that meeting, I'll have a time later for that. Got an email this afternoon, Phase Five landscape. It's gonna be, it was approved today, or I got the email today it was approved. That's from Avenue D to the Bridge. Thirty-one thousand dollars.
Just looking at that today, Bill, that needs to be done. It does look really good to get all that finished up.
Okay. And the amphitheater course is not really on the back burner, but we are still talking about doing something with that, and I'm sure in our next meeting next week, we'll have further discussion about that. And at that point, are there any questions or comments about anything we've got going on?
Only thing I will say, Bill, is I got out in the community last week, kinda walked and talked and did a little talking, and everybody's very excited to have you on board as I am, and I appreciate your hard diligent work you put into it so far, and I look to continue this work for years to come, and I appreciate you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You guys saying anything?
I see it.
Thank you very much.
You're doing.
Thank you, Bill. All right. Mr. City Attorney?
I don't have anything today. Port Authority meeting, which is scheduled for next Wednesday, may be canceled, so before you head out to the college to a Port Authority meeting next week, check with me.
It's next week's meeting.
Tom, are you working on our ordinance? What we're doing around Stone Drive? Rob, are you working on beefing up that ordinance to get a little seat in it? We gotta do something.
Well, I've had some discussions with the building inspector about those issues, and we've looked at some things in other areas. We don't know any way that you get around the fact that the state says that it's, as far as safety and building code issues, that it's the same thing as a stick-built house. But there are some things we can do with foundation, with design criteria, that I think would have an impact on that. You know, the commission has not wanted to get in the design business in the past, but it may be that it's time that you gotta do it.
Right.
We don't have really a draft of anything today that I can show you, but we can start putting that together if that's what y'all want.
On the road, Salsa?
I think moving forward, we need to...
I think we did too, but I think we need to really workshop this thing to death, be sure though that we're not hindering everyone else. The Board Saint Joe, that everyone may wanna build something for theirself, and we gotta be real careful that we don't do that, that we turn a fifty-thousand-dollar house into a hundred-thousand-dollar house because of the design that we put upon the people. And so I agree, yes, we do wanna move forward, but let's just be real careful with this.
A workshop wouldn't be a bad idea, asking the PDORB, I mean, that's where it's supposed to start. Asking the PDORB to look at it wouldn't be a bad first step.
Let's go ahead and do that. When is their next meeting? When is their next meeting?
They meet next Tuesday.
We got two meetings, my one.
Yes, sir, they sure do. So we could ask them to...
Can we get it in? Would you ask them, Jim? It'd be a good move to this way, get started on something.
All right. Jim? Holdings?
Yes, sir. The first item we have is one or two Stone Drive. Currently, we do have a stock work order in place, it's still in place. Stayed for your discussion tonight, if you have anything else you wanna add to it.
Anybody in the audience wish to say anything tonight on this issue? I did have Ms. Mike call me yesterday, and we had a good discussion, and I invited her to come to the meeting tonight, and she said she would, but I don't think she's in the audience. Wouldn't know her if I laid eyes on her, just spoke with her on the phone. But I assured her again, this board, myself, and nobody was trying to discriminate against her. We had nothing against her and her family, but we did have things that we thought didn't fit in certain places, and we thought we had the proper ordinances to keep them out, and that we would just see where we gotta go with this. We do have, like I say, a permanent structure, and I understand that the manufacturing people are wanting to know if they put a permanent structure there, is it gonna be able to stay? Have been some options offered to the homeowner, but the city has made him an offer. Haven't heard anything on that. My major concern right now would be is, can we stop this thing? Can we stop it? And what is it gonna take to stop it? And I don't mind fighting it. I don't mind fighting it, 'cause if we don't fight it in this neighborhood, you will have it in another neighborhood, so it's not only affects the neighborhood it's in, it affects the whole city limits. So that's why I'm pressing on Tom, we need to get something where this can't happen every time we're turning around. I mean, monetary-wise, you know, we have money. Can't fight these things without money. And my only question maybe would be to some of the neighborhood residents there, are you willing to put some money up to help fight this thing? Are you willing to help the city absorb some of the costs that we may absorb by fighting it? We may lose, I don't know. I really don't know. It depends on what the judge is, how he's feeling that day sometimes, more certainly than what you present to him. But I would like the neighborhood people to give that some consideration if we do have to go to litigation with this and fight this in court. Can we expect some kind of relief on what it's all cost to survive it? You and the audience and I, I appreciate if you give that some thought, and talk to your other neighbors in the neighborhood, and see how they feel about it, 'cause as I say, I'm a fighter, and I don't mind fighting for you, but you know, it does cost money to fight, so just keep that in mind. Anybody else have anything on this? Yes, ma'am.
Amy Rogers. My heart is exceedingly sorry for all of this matter because of the fact that we have modular homes here in the city limits. We stay back, I know as far as nineteen eighty, modular homes were approved in the city limits, but trailers was not. Trailers was outside of the city limits. Matter of fact, if you check your history on Harbor Street, on North Port Saint Joe, there's a lot, it's just got sold, but a home was placed on that trailer. When they opened up that street, they opened up that street strictly for trailers on one side, and when those other ones that wanna come build a home there, they made some exceptions for the home there, but that street...
They had an ordinance, they had an ordinance.
There was an ordinance in effect for there. And several people today live in there, trailers on that street. And then later on, and I'm covering the trail, those are trailers, a modular home, and later on, in nineteen eighty, there was a home placed on, modular home placed on Avenue B, and there was a city ordinance. And my heart is exceedingly sorry because of, you know, the, I'll tell you, showing the very presence of evil. And when I see double standards and injustice to one, to me is a threat to justice for all. And I see double standards because of what goes on in North Port Saint Joe, we have a city ordinance, and North Port Saint Joe has been in the history of Port Saint Joe ever since the existence of Port Saint Joe. Ward Ridge just became part of the city limits with some, well, in the eighties, upon the former mayor, Mayor Johnny Mink, made, became into the city limits. But the thing is that if there, a city ordinance is already in place for modular homes, and just 'cause a few, I understand, people in that neighborhood want to not accept this modular home there in the community, I don't think, here we got one in North Port Saint Joe, most recently, my modular home is there, so if the ordinance gonna apply to me, and I'm on the north side, why is it not applying on the south side? You know, what's the big issue here? And it's sad that we got to come between, and when we start...
First thing I like to say, I like to interrupt you, Rob, but there's no discrimination against nobody. No discrimination against north side, no discrimination on this side of town. So that part needs to be left out of the conversation, 'cause we're not discriminating against anybody.
Amy, they petitioned on Harbor Street...
They wanted trailers over there.
Years ago to have modular homes.
Need to do your research.
That's why we're done.
I need my, I got my...
That's why we're done, Amy.
I mean, there's nobody discriminating against the least...
Let me ask you this, Amy, is it fair to the rest of these people in this neighborhood in Ward Ridge who have invested in homes, to have to lower their standards for something that was pulled in on a trailer, Amy?
As you said, it's a lower standards when it's a modular home, a modular home is set up and built just like a house.
No, this is on a frame and pulled in on wheels, Amy. The one that's sitting out there now. It's not...
The DCA sticker that certified modular homes states, without a state sticker, it say a modular home.
They might have, but it's a trailer, Amy. It's a trailer.
It's just a sleek way to get by a city ordinance.
That's why they're done, yeah.
Some congressman somewhere is approved something, and what, he got a tip out in the pocket, I don't know. But I mean, but what I wanna do, I wanna stop right now with discrimination, 'cause those people on that side of town, in that area, asked for to have trailers there. The city didn't force them trailers on them, they asked for. So there is no discrimination, and that's why I want you to stop with that right now. But we're not gonna talk no more about discrimination, 'cause there is none.
That's your opinion, Mayor, but I'm gonna show you what is blatant discrimination. Double standards. I live on the north side, this modular home is on the south side. We both live in the city, so the law should not be different from the south side, no different than the north side, if you have a city ordinance. The city ordinance already accepts modular homes in the city limits, and that is discriminatory. When you got a DCA sticker saying it's a modular home, the paperwork saying it's a modular home, why look at it different? That's almost like bringing the lady, in the scripture of the Bible, say they brought the lady before all the people, and they were stoned, because she had done wrong, but when Jesus started writing on the wall, and look behind, no one was there. And I'm saying, this disturbs me spiritually as a Christian, as a taxpayer, as a citizen, and it is, to me, blatant discrimination, making a difference between two parts of the community.
You're worrying something in this, that nothing to do with this situation.
If that person bought a home anywhere in the city limits, a modular home, at this point, it should be there.
You wanna talk more about a modular home? Okay, well, we'll talk about discrimination.
You went out and checked, and you already got approved that it's a trailer? 'Cause on the paperwork, it said modular home.
I know what, we all know what it says.
So to jump to judgment before you gather up all the facts, to me, that's just another act of discrimination. Get your facts in, and then put the paper where it is, and get it out.
Well, we have a right to put the stock work order there because of the foundation. They don't have the proper foundation.
I agree with you on that.
And once they get, if they wanna go to the link, put a proper foundation there, then who knows what happened after that? But they have to make that decision.
That's where I'm full agreement with. The foundation doesn't seem like it's up to par to city standards. But the home, when you talk about the home, that's a whole different case. But I agree with you, the foundation need to be brought up to par.
You're talking about the difference between a mobile home and a modular home, and I understand there is a difference in those two, but the other part that you're trying to bring into this conversation, I'm not gonna put up there, but there is no discrimination.
Well, I'm not going back when I know it's right.
Okay.
You know, when I know it's, when I know it's right, 'cause I got a home.
And a modular home.
I got a modular home.
Okay.
And they got a DCA sticker. It's state certified, it's a modular home. When I purchased my home, I'd taken all the information from the city. Inspector taken it there, and I gave it to the business, and they look at it, I said, can you imagine living up to the standards and the ordinance of a finished city of Port Saint Joe? I got to come up to par. They fully agreed to. And if something with the foundation is wrong here, you got a foundation problem, we don't have a building structure problem right there. And if this street is as a building structure and problem, I say that here, we got to live it by double standards. There shouldn't be no double standards. We should be working together as people, and as human beings, trying to make people comfortable living in the city of Port Saint Joe.
There's gonna be any.
That's your opinion?
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, too.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am. Come on, let me...
I wasn't going to.
Say your name.
My name's Mary Baird, and my husband and I own the adjacent home. What we're really dealing with is really tricky semantics, and I'm pretty familiar with the whole mobile home, modular home business, because my husband and I had two different modular homes that we placed on St. George Island. When we went to build those homes, there were very different structural components in the modular homes from the mobile homes. Now, the home that was pulled into the lot next to us came in in two pieces of metal stringers with a tongue with wheels underneath it. The pitch on the roof is very shallow. If, I have not inspected the structural elements of that house, but I know that when we built our modular homes, they had regular roof trusses. We went through a company named Wausau Homes, and they specialized in true modulars. They called themselves a modular company on their website and in all their literature. If you go to Nobility Homes, Inc., which is the company that manufactured what's next door to us, there is not the word modular anywhere on that site. I can't see the word modular in any of their paperwork. Now, they may have gone in and said that they were gonna use tie-downs strong enough to meet our Florida hurricane standards, and because of that, they may have gotten the sticker or the designation or whatever to pass the hurricane standard for our area. But when you look at that home and the quality of construction, the roof pitch is shallow. I think we need to examine it a little farther. We're playing a very tricky semantics game, and this company has, in fact, I think, pulled it over on Mr. and Mrs. Mike as much as our community. I don't believe they realized when they got into it what they were doing, and that what they had purchased was actually a mobile home and not a modular. So if there's any way our building inspector can go in and look at the size of the, and the size and weigh it's put together, the roof trusses, how the tie-down is, understand that the manufacturer now has offered to put a permanent foundation under the structure to try one more sneak it in, but that's still not gonna make it look like even the modular homes that I'm familiar with. I don't think that these people even realized when they started in this process. I think somewhere along the line, they got snookered. I have very many personal friends that retired here and have homes in Jones Homestead. The reason they have homes in Jones Homestead is that they wanted to do a mobile home, and it was not allowed in the city. Some of those homes structurally look much better than what's at one oh-two Stone Drive. So I would like the board to dig in a little deeper as far as what the specifications on that structure are. Thank you.
I remember Mike's, when he was here, if I remember correctly, he mentioned that he paid fifteen thousand dollars extra to get a sticker, if I remember.
He said, for the foundation, to get the foundation in.
No, no. He said he paid extra to get a sticker, so I don't, it's, that's just...
There's a different comment made there, 'cause Mrs. Mike talking to me on the phone said that they paid the fifteen thousand extra to get it built stronger.
Right. For the upgrades.
For upgrades, is what she told me. So I'm not sure which it is, but...
Well, I just want you to clarify something for me. Here on the corner of, I think it's Hambridge, I think, in the past, I mean, here's a mess I know with the school has, the building moved outside the school, the elementary school. Some of the citizens from that, over that area, they complained about those extra buildings that the school needed. The city worked with Mr. Hambridge Building now, it's a daycare center up there off of Long Avenue. It was brought in, it was a building, and they had to renovate it. This is right here in the city limits, so if I'm correct, I mean, if I'm wrong, please correct me, because these are things that was placed in, and one time, you know, they talked about coming, stuff coming in on wheels, and they needed to fit city ordinance. Time's given to these people to get their building fastened. That was the building when built from the ground up, that daycare center on that corner, nor was the building that...
I think it was hauled down, I think it was hauled down on wheels with a tongue, I think it brought in a flat...
But if it would've came on a boat, and it fit up to the city ordinance, well, that would've made a difference, what, I mean, she mentioned somebody, it coming on wheels, but I'm saying, if it came in on a boat, and it, they had a hundred and forty minutes, a hundred and forty-nine wind factor that the city ordinance requires for modular homes to come in. If it met all those specifications, what's the difference in those? 'Cause we, those first houses over there, the Lisby area, that we call Lisby, every one of those came in in two parts on a trailer that brought them in, and they fastened them down and finished it, but it was the finished results. And I think we just too premature, jumping into something before this man could complete his structure. Wait till he finished his structure before we just condemn him right off the bat and say it's wrong. That's what hurts me about it, about it, it's a question.
Anyone else?
Matthew Taylor, I'm thirty-two oh-six Garrison, right across the street from the structure, and question. My question to the board is, has anybody designated an individual person to reach out regarding further negotiations with Mr. Mike's? I understand that, I guess the reason I'm asking is, my concern is, that I understand that the manufactured home company would not return it or whatever, but I mean, just from a standpoint of getting possibly the city, the mobile home company, Mr. Mike's in a room to sit down, possibly find a solution, because I agree with you, I think from a litigious standpoint, it could get very expensive. I think most of the people in our area are willing to, you know, help recoup some of the cost and put together what we can, but at the same time, I feel like from an economic standpoint, and just from the overall living, if the Mikes move in, you know, it could be a tense area, considering the economic issues that are involved for the other homeowners in the neighborhood, that will see loss in property value. So I would just like to encourage, maybe we could put something together from that standpoint, and have all three parties sitting in a room, and maybe come down, come out with something on that standpoint.
I think the mayor and the city manager and the attorney ought should be the butt that direct...
Yeah, yeah, just something.
...to...
Yeah. Everybody sit down face to face and maybe...
We have made them an offer, and haven't gotten any response from that offer, and I would encourage us to reach out to them again.
It's just strictly Mr. Mike's.
Reach out to Mr. Mike and say...
I think not only Mr. Mike's, though, after we meet with Mr. Mike's, we also need to bring the trailer people in at the same time.
I feel like we're talking in circles.
Yeah, we gotta have...
Maybe we could come to some type of accommodations.
I don't wanna be in the middle of anything, I don't, I mean, I think the mayor and the city manager, maybe Tom, but all, but if there's anything I can do to help with this situation, I'd be glad to. The only thing I will say, and I'm gonna say on this thing is, is there's not a citizen in Port Saint Joe that if they're faced with the same thing, whether it be you, Ms. Amy, or anybody else, if their property value is gonna be hurt, the way these peoples have been told, these people have been told their property value could be hurt, I'm gonna stand up for you and anybody else, because it's not fair. Do I think the Mikes intentionally did it? No, I do not. Do I wanna see it fixed? Yes, I do. And I think that all we could do is all sit down together, and let's talk about it, see what we can do, because if they fix the foundation, or whether they fix the foundation or not, I would think the Mikes probably don't wanna live there. I would've thought. I mean, there's just some tension there now, at this point. So we've been going on this a month, let's really, over the next two weeks, try to get together, and Jim, maybe call everybody and get a consensus of what they're feeling, and so that, you know, and when we tell you something, we gonna support what your decision is on that, and, 'cause we gotta get something going on, that trailer's still sitting there, and we gotta, we gotta do something. This is not personal, though, and I wanna say that once again.
What we got is, we got a stock work order that's put in place. At this point in time, nobody can do anything in this court, 'cause we have a stock work order put in place. Based on the consensus of the board, I have reached out to Mr. Mike to see if he was interested in some type of negotiation as far as the lot itself and the move of the trailer. Mr. Mike has not returned my phone call. As indicated, one of the meetings before, he did indicate that we'd had a conversation, but he has not responded back to me. The manufacturer has reached out to the building department, trying to see about if they could work out something, trying to fix the foundation on there. So that's where we're at. We've got the manufacturer wanting to move forward on the manufactured home to put it in place. Mr. Mike is, at this point, has not responded back to any negotiation with the city.
Right. That's kinda where we're at there.
I just wanna pick up with the property value law, because the same thing, you got the same situation with the apartment, the proposed development of the apartment coming over on north side, off of Cliff's End. Several of those people do not want departments to come over there, because they feel like they're gonna bring their property value down. They said it right here in this meeting, they indicated it, so many ways, letters been printed in the paper, and they're not, like, as for, let's get some clarification of the difference between affordable housing and, you know, low-income housing. So people feel like that development coming over on north side feel that it would lower their property value down, but as little has been done, a group of people hadn't been called, as with the steps that we've taken here about this particular issue, and that's what I'm saying, is double standards. Are we gonna take an issue about, someone feel that their property value gonna be lowered down?
I've been working hard on both sides, Ms. Amy. I've been in touch with the property appraiser here in town, I've been in touch with the people of the state of Florida, I've been in touch with an outside independent, an appraiser. There's been no foundation of those affordable housings creating any decrease in property value. There has been within mobile homes. I have been to your house personally, myself. Your house does not fit the same description of what this house is as sitting out here on this lot. Also, I will tell you this, yours was asked for by the people of that community, if we could bring in mobile homes, and that's what the city granted them. Those people in the Ward Ridge community, they did not ask, can we bring in mobile homes or modular homes? That's the difference. Ms. Amy, if you called me and said, William, they fixing to put a cesspool sewer plant by my house, it's gonna kill the value of my house, I'm gonna be here today fighting for you the same way I am for these people of Ward Ridge. It's not personal.
And Amy, it's not black and white. I'm gonna tell you, my neighbor down the street, one of the first calls I got, you know Curtis Beard? Curtis has probably one of the nicest-looking houses on my street. He was one of the first people to call me about this mobile home. There's nothing discriminatory, there's nothing personal against these people. But we feel like there's an injustice being done to us also, but we've invested in the community.
See, there is, I mean, there is a gross misunderstanding of the future, and when you sit there, Commissioner, and you continue to call it a mobile home, when the city has an ordinance already in place for modular homes to be accepted, and it's not...
Not there, not there, Amy, not accepted there.
It's all the city...
No, no. The only place they're accepted is in, yes, it is, too. No, no. The only place they're accepted is in, yes, it is, too. Jim, what's the ordinance say?
Uh, in your land.
Oh, they are.
It must have went and changed because, like I said, Mr. Hambridge, building it up there on that corner on Long Avenue was a trailer that brought in that was upgraded to, uh, a, a modular.
Amy, I'm not sure about that, Mr. Anderson.
Go back and look here recently.
In the land development regulations, it does allow for the area of Bay Street, there is an allowable provision in there for modular homes, but it does not allow for it anywhere else in town based on the land.
Go back and I, I bring the copy, the copy that I got, everything is phased city, it doesn't designate no area in this area. My paper says city of Port St. Joe designate modular homes to come in the city of Port St. Joe. There's no area designated. This whole thing has been changed around here recent.
The current regulation was put in place in two thousand eight.
And, uh, this current, like, Mike came in on the fourteenth, but it was not, this was, like, they had this right here, I said, in, uh, nineteen eighty. You go back and look at, it was a Hambridge building, everyone know it wasn't built from the ground, it was a trailer that brought in.
You're saying that we can only get this going.
I'm not arguing, I'm trying to make it very clear. I know you got to make it very clear. You understand? Let's get the facts first. Let's give them, give them opportunity to get the facts together, the facts before we call it something that it's not and necessarily discriminate when you don't even reckon, respect it as a modular home, you still calling a modular home. And the paper said it is.
Well, we thank you for your attendance.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The next item we have is boat ramp improvements. Mr. Colson has been contacting, he's working on a, a seawall that he's working on now. Probably not a good time this week to work on the boat ramp with a big holiday weekend coming up anyways, but he promises he will get here just as quick as he can to do that step down. It's going to go all the way around the existing middle section that we already put, it's coming. Any questions about the boat ramp? Uh, the next item we have is Northwest Florida Water Management District Grant. Uh, recall, the city got three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for a grant. This involves the lime pre-treatment process at the water treatment plant, also for improvements to your water distribution line between Tenth Street and down to Seventy-One. We bid it out four, in four different bids. We actually rebid it to see what we could get all the prices in. With your current four bids, you're at about a hundred and six thousand dollars over what your grant permits right now. Uh, we had a meeting last week at Preble Ridge with Chris Grantland, myself, Larry McClellan, and, uh, Mr. Smallwood. We are going to have our engineers go back and talk with Northwest Florida and see what our options are. We looked at several different things as to whether we're going to change our scope of work, but first we want to give the opportunity to Northwest Florida to see if there's any available funding to complete the project based on your current bids. We also got to notice today that there's additional funding available for Northwest Florida for a new cycle, so it may be a good time to, to see if they will go ahead and fund it as is. We'll bring it to you as soon as we get clarification from Northwest Florida as to what they will and will not allow as far as your current grant. All right, the next item is in, in reference to the industrial park sign, Commissioner Thursday, want to talk to you tonight about it?
Just a little update. I've been curious about where we stood since we changed up the sign ordinance and I talked to, uh, Toy Robertson. I knew he'd been working on that sign pretty diligently, so I spoke with him two or three weeks ago. I called Jim to tell Jim that, hey, Jim, we needed to send a letter in on this. What it's going to do is, uh, allow them to use the sign site that's there now to do some advertising, which will also be good for the city out the industrial road. Uh, when I called Jim, Jim said, you ain't not going to believe this, but we just got the paperwork in today. So after a full year, I just had to call Jim on the right day. So Jim, I appreciate all your hard work and Mr. Roberts, all his hard work. But we had told those people we would try to help them get to where they were trying to get, and I believe we've done that at this point. Am I correct, Jim?
Yes, sir. The FDOT permit has been sent back in, it's been signed, C and M, Miss Gina Johnson's the one that's working on the sign permit for those folks. St. Joe Company finally agreed to allow them to have it there. The plan is to have a sign very similar to the one in the middle, but it'd be one on each side. That way, each one of the businesses at Commerce Park will be able to advertise their prospective businesses out there, so.
And I think.
FDOT signs often are a good thing.
Right.
Commissioner, most of the holdup on that project had to do with St. Joe Company and, and the Commerce Park, uh, Property Owners Association. It, it hadn't been Toy and it hadn't been the.
No, I knew it hadn't, and I did talk to him and, uh, I hope I didn't make it sound that way. He has worked really hard to get this thing off the ground and I knew that. And, uh, I didn't want him to think that us as a board had sat there and said we were going to try to follow through with helping them do that. We didn't do anything. Uh, we've all been working on it. I knew you'd worked, helped get that thing going. It's, uh, been like you said, it was just a lot of red tape there. I, it's my understanding, but anyway, we, we're there.
Uh, the next item was Highway ninety-eight golf cart crossing. I think Mayor Patterson wore it to table tonight, but he may have somebody.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up because I have had a lot of golf cart people ask me, when we going to be able to cross Highway ninety-eight? And as we know, it's a money thing again, and, uh, so we'll have this on the agenda for the next meeting. And, uh, I would like for every golf cart owner that wants to cross Highway ninety-eight show up and let's discuss what we can do to, to get us over there. Because I, I think that's what most people want. They'd rather bid across ninety-eight in the wood seventy-one, or they want to get down to the marina when the scholar festival things are going on. Even get you the P E, to buy their groceries, they drive a little golf cart, so I think there's a lot of interest in it. I know I've been talking to a lot of people and I'd promised them I would put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And so, you know, anybody got a golf cart, please tell them to be here. What is that, on the fifteenth, Jim?
Yes, sir, it'll be two weeks from today.
Fifteen, two weeks from today. Okay, that's all I hear on.
Uh, on the new business, first item we have is fee waiver request for the Centennial Building, uh, for the end of February and all of March, TDC film crew. Uh, Ms. Jennifer Jenkins contacted me the other day. They are looking to try to do some advertising through the TDC for the whole county. Uh, she wants us to see about possibly reserving the Centennial Building. I don't have a lot of details on it, but they are trying to work on, uh, setting up for a film crew to come in for advertising in Gulf County.
Uh, Jim, I spoke to you a little bit on it because you had asked me what I knew about it, being on the TDC board. I do not know a whole lot about it. I'm completely fine with that. Uh, board members, for what I know about what's going to go on out there. The only thing maybe I'd like to see us do is maybe, you know, we're going to give them a fee waiver request, but we're talking a whole month. See if maybe the TDC couldn't pick up the utilities on the, for that month, and if they'll do that, I'm completely fine with that, because I believe that's good stuff for the city of Port St. Joe. But I don't think that we need to try to flip the bill for a full month of, uh, air conditioning, heating, lights, all that.
So the plan's a good idea, Commissioner.
What are, what are they planning to do inside the Centennial? Does anybody know? I think it's going to be like a staging area for them, is the way I understood it. Is that kind of what you understood?
Got very little detail on it. That sounds like what's going to happen.
Right. I, I certainly agree with it, but I certainly like to have a few more details instead of just giving them a month and we don't know what, have any idea what they're going to do as well as, they definitely need to pick up tab on utilities and, and any of, you know, damage, whatever.
I'd move, I'd move the table until we get more information.
I think so. I think that's appropriate. We're going to do a soft hold on the building.
Several months.
But also, too, that's a busy time before St. Joe. February's already pretty much booked up.
That's what I want to ask you, is there normally something we have in February, March, cause the.
Some of the lines cut the force from that.
One thing that you tied up or, you know.
Yeah, we don't find anybody that's on a yearly thing.
Marty Grau?
Marty Grau in February.
I think it'd be worth it. Dana Boyer's.
Bow out, bow out.
There's the chamber dinners at Bunn's, so there's three weeks in February have already been booked up.
Well, that's the thing, too, now, y'all. We need to be sure that we're not kicking somebody that does this thing every year to the side, you know, Jim, I told you the other day. If it's open and it's good for Gulf County, I'm fine with it. I mean, I'm on that board. I'm all for it. But at the same time, I mean, there's people that may rent that thing every year from us that's a great organization. I don't want to kick them to the side because of it. So we may have to help them find another staging area if that comes to that.
I'll try to get.
See what kind of info you can get on that.
All right, the next item we have is in reference to the museum property. We talked about it last week. You just want to put it back out there for you to keep these, working on it. Because we've talked about the ideas that if we're going to, if we're going to do this, we're going to need to fix the keeper's quarters and those type of things. So we've got to figure out a funding source. We have applied for a grant. We've agreed throughout the voting process, we've put a match of ten percent on there to try to help get that grant this year, but.
Let me just mention something, guys, that I talked to Jim about a little bit the other day and also talked to Bill Kennedy about. That being in the, uh, area for the PSGRA board, I'd like to possibly, and I know we're not at a PSGRA meeting tonight, but our budget's coming up, I'd like for y'all to all think about. And we'll have to probably get some clarification from the state, uh, Ms. Carol Westmoreland on that. But I'd like to see about possibly putting some PSGRA funds into less getting those things renovated so that we can move forward. It's a win-win for the city, I believe. I don't know whether we can do that, but if we do, I think it's a good idea and a good avenue to take because, you know, guys, if we get a grant, that's all good and that's great. We can find a place to use it, but we're still talking a year to year and a half off, probably more like a year and a half, possibly two. So that is a thought for an upcoming meeting. I have presented it to Jim and to, uh, Bill, and I don't know if Bill's mentioned anything to any of you guys, but I think that'd be well, good money spent. Give us some thought and let's see what we think, see whether, whether we can do that. We really don't have any idea what it's going to cost to fix them up. I also reached out to, uh, sorry, uh, Rex, reached out to Jim, I think it was Jim or, no, maybe Bill, one of those guys, and told them since Ben was on the PSGRA board with us. Maybe we could get Ben to go over there with, I think it was Bill, wasn't it, that I asked to get Ben to go over there and look at those houses with him and give us some kind of rough estimate on what it, we're looking, what kind of dollar figure we might be looking at to do that. And I think we need a start. We still don't have water and power over there. No, we got to get there, too. No, uh, yeah, that'd be great. We, we need that start, we certainly do.
We'll just keep working on our ideas. We'll keep, we'll keep talking about it.
Uh, the next item we have is legislative funding request. It's that time of year where we've got, um, Senator Mumford and, uh, Representative Bishiers has actually asked us to start giving our funding request to the legislature again this year. Last year, the things that we submitted for, uh, was for the Cape Sewer, Beacon Hill Sewer, Long Avenue paving and infrastructure we put in for last year. And we also put in for, to help the port with dredging. We did not get any of those funded. So that was the items we put in for last year, so get your thoughts together. It's that time again, we put in our wish list, but we were not successful.
Were we told on any of those particular items, a reason why or what, or, I mean, is it just kind of cut and dry that you didn't get them?
We never got them.
Okay, so there's nothing we need to back up and look at again on that particular list that you can think of, or just should we try to keep on keeping on?
I think you keep on, and last year, we even went in with the county, too. The county mirrored most of our projects. I think they mirrored the Cape, Beacon Hill and with.
They didn't get any either?
None of us got it, so.
We all have some bad ideas then, Jim, for, come up with some better ideas this year.
I'll be thinking about your ideas and. September calendar. Look at your calendar on page five. There's a lot of milestones coming up this month. Tomorrow, let's see. Tomorrow, you have two meetings tomorrow as well. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with the county at three o'clock. That's a joint meeting to discuss, uh, different items going on in the city and the county. And then at four o'clock, you have one with the Restore Act Committee to discuss where we're at with the Restore Act, uh, budget. They're the big item. Next week, on the tenth, you'll have your first vote on the budget, and then we're looking to adopt on the twenty-ninth. We had to lay out the calendar for the month because we have a lot of items going on there. Any questions about the calendar for the month?
Many of the public may want to know about the, uh, two P D R B meetings, Eric Trudy Mum.
Yes, sir.
The eighth and the twenty-second.
On the eighth, we had the plant approval, uh, for the, for the planning board to consider. That is actually in reference to the, uh, Patton Park subdivision, which was the old hospital site. And they have one special section for Eighth Street. And then on the twenty-second, they will be considering a recommendation for the affordable housing project from Paces Foundation on the twenty-sixth. That meeting will be at the Centennial Building because we have a request from a lot of folks, so the twenty-second will be at six o'clock at the Centennial Building. Uh, the next item we have is a reference to open enrollment options to city of Port St. Joe for city staff will be next Thursday and Friday, which is also on your calendar. I'm sorry, next Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, one request we have is from Woodsman of the World. They would like to offer Roth IRAs to the city employees on there. Uh, Ms. Carol Dixon, Chad A. Rand, they said it would be no cost to the city, so if you don't have a problem with that, we'll let them set up a booth for next Thursday or next Wednesday and Thursday on that.
And that's fine. Jim, do we need to discuss anything that we talked about in the meeting prior to that, or we pretty much said on that?
I think the understanding I had was that, um, we're going to get, we're going to direct Mr. Van Leirp to see if he can get, uh, an Aflac representative there for you for next Thursday or try to offer that as a, as an additional.
As an addition. Do we need to put that in, in motion? Guys, I'll make a motion that we, uh, direct Mr. Van Leirp to also try to find us an alternative source, uh, possibly Aflac or somebody, you know, in the same type business rather than the current carry we have now. Or along with the current carry we have now, should I say? You just, you just want to make a motion add an addition. Add an addition. Yes, preferably Aflac.
Here, a motion by Commissioner Thursday, second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five eight.
Uh, the last item I have on the new business tonight is the Maddox House, advocates for listing them on the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, we already have been successful in having the Lighthouse complex added on to the National Historic Register. Uh, might be appropriate to consider the Maddox House as well, so free consideration. If you would like for us to do it, we can get in an application and see what happens.
It'd be a great addition for that area to have. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and move forward with that if you need me.
Motion by Commissioner Thursday, second by Commissioner Buzette. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five eight.
So I had to not make.
All right, next up, Mr. John Grantland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've got two items on the agenda this evening, uh, the first being the Cape Sewer Extension, just as a project update for the board. Uh, we're about sixteen hundred feet in this first initial leg. Uh, it's possible we're, we're complete with the Sappadilla Lane section tomorrow, but realistically, I'm giving it Thursday. Uh, we should be pressure testing by Friday at the latest, so hopefully, you know, by the middle of the end of next week, you know, that, that can be bought, you know, in service. So, once that's complete, we'll fall back to the Hemingway Court to complete that section, so that's where we're at on that.
And, uh, John, we still have some money left in that, that Cape expansion.
We did, correct.
Guys, uh, real quick, I don't, just want to interject real quick. It's kind of real preliminary right now, but I've been in talks with another developer out in that way that we could possibly maybe have enough, uh, area in there. He wants to talk to us about maybe running some sewer out there and possibly if so, I mean, we could probably get about four taps out of it. And, uh, preliminary talk with John, probably looking at about five thousand and us get about seventeen thousand in return. So as this develops more, I think that may be another great opportunity for us.
Well, I'll say enough. Item two on the agenda is Blue Herring Drive.
Is that the same thing?
Yes, I, I received an email two weeks ago. Uh, I believe it was, and, and, you know, discussed this with Mr. Anderson. He and I sat down, we ran some numbers together on this project. I didn't bring mine with me, Jim, so I apologize for that. But what, what it is essentially is a fifteen hundred linear foot run. There's eighteen lots currently in the subdivision. Uh, the owner, uh, has agreed, like, two owners have agreed to buy and purchase three taps between the two. Uh, so right now, prelim cost estimates are three thousand something in materials, you know, we have a bore cost, you have some, a little bit of engineering cost along with that. Uh, total project's between fifty-five hundred, I think, six thousand.
Six, twenty-three.
So I'm pulling that off memory. But anyway, that, that was the anticipated cost, so, you know, it would be my recommendation, because of where it's at, because of what we're currently doing, I, I would recommend the board just move forward. Uh, secure three additional customers on this line and then kind of keep chugging away with this.
And we're going to, how much will the three taps? Ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars is what it's developed from the play that we're on. So that's pretty, that's pretty good, a little devil, isn't it?
I, I think it is. I mean, it's, it's a small run. It shouldn't take but a few days to put it in.
Jim, go ahead and make a motion.
It's up to the board.
Yes, sir, with the different vendors on there, breaking it out is, I think it's well below, we would not have to bid this out, would be my recommendation, because of your different vendors involved in there, we'd get you below that thread. Would be my recommendation because of your different vendors involved in there would get you below that threshold. So with your approval, I think we can move forward on this.
I'll make a motion, guys, that we move forward with Blue Herring Drive Sewer.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Thursday, second by Mr. McCrone. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes 5-8.
While we're on that subject, the Cape Sewer, the, the city does have some issues with, with billing. Quite a few issues with billing customers out there. And so I'd like to see us put that on the agenda for the next meeting so we can discuss some of the issues. And I'd encourage all of you to talk to Jim about what those, what those issues are because we don't own the water system. We have a hard time tracking our sewer customers. And, and so they, they turn the water off and then all of a sudden we, we don't get paid and it's hard. It's very, they're having a difficult time. So we need to, we need to think seriously about a, a monthly fee of some sort whether they're using it or not. So that's some of the things I'd encourage you to talk to Jim about that because they're, they're having a time with it. And we're losing money.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Just a few questions for the board to me.
Anybody for John?
Oh, John, I was going to ask you something. How are we coming on the reflective polls for some of the stop signs that you and I had talked about ordering?
They have been ordered. We have not received.
Well, that's a long way away, I think.
It should be in the mail.
Right. All right. Thank you, John.
All right, Mr. Larry.
The, one thing I have, I guess I'd register Commissioner McCrone, college sample location, talked to DP. They said we could move that.
Good deal.
So we did, Ms. Todd is taking care of that for you. She's adjusted our stage two site plan. And we removed that flusher from the college, so you don't have to worry about that.
How about residual? What's our number that we're looking at?
They're looking better now. Yes, sir.
How about air compressor?
Still hasn't come in yet. Probably about 10 days.
Okay, good deal.
Got any questions?
Anything else? Thank you, Larry. Ms. Lynn.
The only thing I have tonight is the pipeline repair to our excellent line. The contractor should be on site tomorrow morning, seven o'clock. They brought the crane in today. The crane is up on the top of the hill, so we should be starting that project. Hopefully, we'll be through by Thursday afternoon if everything goes according to plan. That's all I have.
If you're looking, you'll see the curb enforcement.
Be sure. I don't have anything for you. Yes, sir. I don't have any updates for you, Mr. Mayor, unless...
What we have with the hospital plant, all the locks, are we ready to go?
PDRB's only going to get it next week.
PDRB next week will give you a recommendation on there. Hopefully, you'll get a favorable recommendation. Then on the next city commission meeting, you'll vote. Once you approve the plant, you'll be good to go to PSGRA.
Now, curb enforcement. Like anybody, look over that thing because we call this what people think Richie's working. I got Richie doing it.
Richie?
Richie. Richie, Richie, I told him I'd get him all confused. He'll answer either one. But he's out there writing up citations, chicken law for accumulation. A lot of people just like to put trash out by the road. I mean, old mattresses, couches, household. Apparently opposed to was putting poles up or something like you see around to keep people from turning in where they're not supposed to turn in. As soon as they pass under the light, they put on brakes, turn left in there. People pile up behind them and we're going to have a rear end situation. Same thing at McDonald's. I want us to think about what we can do there so it'll be somewhat aesthetically pleasing and, and do the job that it's supposed to do. So I'll get with the chief. We brainstorm it, bring it back.
It's these new signs I've got.
New what?
These new signs I've ordered are going to do it.
You think?
You won't believe it.
Can't we do away with the yellow lines?
Sure. The idea's, the idea's.
Turn left, turn left.
Somebody's going to point.
I tell you, the worst place is Hungry Howie's.
The worst place is Hungry Howie's.
We could try whatever. I remember when there were the lineators. What's that word? Down there by McDonald's. But I remember seeing a lot of them broke off and run over.
Right, right. Yeah. They have this new big steel from now.
Anyway, I, I, we need to think about that.
I, we've stopped a couple of cars turning into Hungry Howie's coming this way. And they, they stop and traffic gets backed up through the red light and it's a problem.
I think some people don't realize it's against the law to go across.
And we can write some tickets.
You order?
No.
I better do it. I better do it. I crossed them things in a heartbeat.
Yeah, I think, but we're going to have.
I love pizza.
I, I, I agree with you. Both, both places, they turn across two double yellow lines. Make an illegal turn.
Right. Yeah. Anyway, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. City Clerk?
Two minutes on page 10. You have an email concerning the cost of the monpower. To the light has you talked several times about doing something, but need some direction on that, please. What would you like to do to move forward? It's page 10.
This is just get power for the site.
Yes, sir.
Miss Yobbitt, is this just from Duke Energy? This just running it up to the pole or?
This is to the lighthouse. I understand there's some conduit already there, but this would be to help get it to the lighthouse. It would not be up the lighthouse. It's strictly to the lighthouse.
Let's get it up the lighthouse.
That would be the city.
We need to try to get it all that all together, propose on that? Did you want us to go ahead and move forward?
You're going to have to separate duty house on that.
That's why I said that.
We're going to have to do this.
But will that, will that, John, John, help us with that too or Mr.? But if we do that, does that provide power also at some point in time when we need power to the keeper's quarters and?
You would have to go in and do all of that.
I mean, but yeah, we get that point. Yeah, you see what I'm saying.
It's enough fee for all that.
This would set your pedestal right there. You have the power to the site. From there, you would have to break it down.
We can break it off. As long as we can do that.
We just need to find $3,000.
$3,000. I tell you what, I make a motion. We take $3,000 out of BP money tonight. Let's go ahead and get that done.
I'll second it.
All right.
How much do we? You said estimate of $3,000.
Motion by Commissioner Thursday and a second by Commissioner Ashbrook. Now, any discussion?
Mayor, you may want to say up to $3,500 to give you a little bit of flex. And this was an estimate.
Up to $3,500.
How much money left in BP?
$254.
$254.
We got $3,500. We need lots out there, guys.
My second stance.
Second stance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-8. Anything else, Michelle?
That's all, sir.
Any citizens in the audience wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wondering on the issue with the museum property. You may have some comments about the museum property. I just want to get a clarification.
Jim, what do you want?
Yes, Rob. Basically, the city is just considering at some point taking over that property on there, put it into the city administration.
So any future plans with the, the museum to have it up and running, have connected with the schools, with the tourists, developing, let it be one of the main sites when tourists come in the community to come to the museum? Any kind of, you know, they would discuss it sometime in the past, but I have not seen any effort made towards, you know, putting that museum so it could be viewed as one of the tourist sites when people come in.
I think what we're talking about would move the, the museum contents down to one of the keeper's houses by the lighthouse.
You're not talking to monument, are you?
No, no, just the contents of the, inside the museum. The actual contents in the museum.
Rock.
The monument always stay like it is.
Their budget out there, Ms. Amy, is $60,000 a year, and they're not even meeting 5% of that a year off of revenue because nobody knows about that museum. It's a great museum, but it's hidden in a residential area. So the thought process, and I know Commissioner Bezette has been pushing this for quite some time, is to possibly get that moved, like Commissioner McCrone said, to one of the lighthouse keeper's quarters or maybe two of them, I don't know at this point, to, so that for educational, tourists, for our locals, what have you, to be able to come in there possibly, buy a ticket, take a walk up the lighthouse, take a tour of the museum, and it all kind of be all confined in one point together. That's kind of, I think, everyone's vision up here.
As far as educationally, you know, you take the kids or, you know, classes to the lighthouse, your museum is right there on the site. So I think, you know, in combination, it would be a win-win, you know.
And there's a, there's a need more publicity and that's what I was concerned with. Just want to make it very clear that we preserve the history.
Right.
Of the museum.
The state would require us, if they give us that property, they would require us to move all the contents, set up displays. The only thing that would change is the location.
Right.
They'd still have everything and possibly a little bit more.
But the monument, I would stay in fact and the city would retain.
Oh, yeah. We would own the property from, from the museum all the way to the bay. Clean up that property and try to put it back in its original way with just palm trees going down to, toward the bay and thin out some of the pines. But that's a little far off. The building, my idea for the building is we need a permanent place that can be ADA compliant for a meeting place. The city could get in there and renovate it and make a nice meeting place for us. We'd let the fire department have their building back. We could possibly use upstairs the city hall for more offices if we need it. But the idea is to take the building itself and have a, you know, a nice meeting place for, for the city meeting.
That's what I just wanted to get that clear.
Right, right. You've, you've got everything we know right now.
Okay, because we just, we just getting way out, we really need it, it needs to be worked on so it be put in a place so it can be recognized, it can become.
Yeah, be more recognized down here than it is out there. That's cool.
One of the items I noticed that was left off by the whole business, a gentleman came before the board at last meeting. He addressed the issue about the Jettie Park name being changed to Cooper Sims Veterans Park. What is the status of that? I know this wasn't on the open list in this agenda here.
We've had several people that's been out of town this past week. I'll get with Charlie Gibson. He's actually been out of town for a couple of days. I'll get with him.
Because he did bring up the point that he wanted to make sure they wanted to know the significance other than Jettie Park being one of the Jets things. He did not, you know, he wanted to know about the history of it, why was it named that, but if it did not cause a problem, he suggested that to the board last minute, you know, at the last meeting. Remember, the man came up here.
Right. He's on the Dixieville Motel. I can't think of who.
Remember. I just wanted to know the status of that. Other item is that, thank you all for the sign for at Bay Street. Got, we got the sign there, there on, on Bay Street. We got the sign for Bay Street and Avenue A. Got that done. Okay, and we discussed last, at last month's meeting also about the property. What is the status that we were saying that Commissioner Thursday said that we should get the bigger business owners of the property to get them to sort of clean the property up. I was concerned about Highway 98.
What I discussed with you is the Highway 98. And I have reached out to Hal Kills that has the contract over that. And on top of that, have you looked at it lately?
Oh, it's nice.
It looks better, doesn't it? Because we can't cut any further over, Ms. Amy, that's.
The property owner, that's what I was.
Well, and he has, that's all in the works. Unfortunately, sometimes two weeks in between meetings, everything works real slow in government. I don't have a lot of patience, so sometimes it gets on me just like it might you. But I am working on it. I promise you that. And he is going to reach out to the Saint Joe Company and see what we can do. But I have had that trimmed up. Mr. Grantland took care of that for us. It looks a lot better. But now everything else is on the other people's property.
We got those trees of division from north.
Well, we're getting closer. We're getting closer.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, it's outstanding though with the screen on the side. We're just trying to get those, that division from north and south of the area. Other item was on Avenue D, well, in the past, made a, addressed the board about sidewalks.
Sidewalks. I did discuss, John, where you at? Did he leave?
Oh, yeah. I'm a guest from here that was still good.
Two weeks ago, I brought that up to John Grant and told him that with all the work we'd had, and he agreed with me that that had been put on the back burner. And John had promised me that we would be in a better position now that we've got some things behind us to start moving forward on that. I do not want to tell you a date, but it hadn't been forgotten. I'll put it like that.
What area are you talking about?
Remember when we talked about behind the?
The Dollar General store.
What street was that, though?
That's Avenue D up to Martin Luther.
I think we'd.
Behind the church.
I wish you'd check with Commissioner Quinn too, but I think that could be one of his streets he's going to pave, so.
It may be.
First time tomorrow is at three o'clock. He said we need to issue with the joint meeting to bring that up about that. But Hunter Street has the sidewalk. Avenue D going to Martin Luther King and Avenue D leading to Highway 98 doesn't have the sidewalk. And that's when you're walking from Martin Luther King to the Dollar General is very dangerous. You got to walk in the road. There's red dogs. Some of the lights out, streetlights out there.
We're on top of it. We're just.
Like everything, government moves real slow.
And last but least, can't we take this point here and put it to the left so we address us? When we sit in those chairs, it's so low and y'all so low.
If we move it, they can't hear us.
I cannot see three of them. I had to move over here because I like to see it in face when I'm talking to them.
But if you move it over, I'm not sure the microphone will pick up what people say.
Could you check it out sometimes?
We'll check it out. We'll check it out.
I like to see you when I talk to you.
Put me in the eye. Anyone else? Any other citizen wish to speak tonight? One, one, twice. All right, Commissioner Thursday.
Only one thing, and this is not something really I just failed to mention. Asked Jim about this earlier. Jim, you and I had spoke last week or something, maybe about the school flashing signs that we have there on Long Avenue. Looking at maybe putting one of them up there on 20th Street by Faith Christian School to see if that might help them a little bit. Did you ever find that?
I need to look at that. I'll get with Chief tomorrow.
That's fine. Just, it didn't drop. Yeah, I had forgotten it too, so let's get back up on that. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Ashbrook?
I have nothing, sir. I'm all meetinged out.
I heard that.
Commissioner McCrone?
Jim, I'm getting some calls about waste protein, you know, little stuff, you know, the trucks leaking stuff all over the road. People driving through it and say, we can check on that.
Or what do you get on the clothes, the garbage cans when it's raining?
Yeah. Just flip the lid back. I got a complaint today. They just throw them out, you know, anywhere they can. The wheels are breaking off. So are we logging these complaints like we talked about when they signed this conference?
I can assure you, mayor, myself and, and staff are sending a regular to them. Yes, we have a complete log of these that we're sitting on in those.
You don't have anything?
No.
I do, I do, I do. Just briefly, I failed to mention at the last meeting about the League of Cities Conference. Me and Commissioner Thursday went to down in Orlando. It was very informative. Couldn't get around to seeing all of the things they had to do, but I got every session on the MP3. David's the first one to get it, to make a copy. Anybody else wants to make a copy of that? There's every session that they had at that conference there on that thing right there. And everybody wants one. When David gets through, some of the MP3 that you want to, sometimes sit down, you, you, you may learn something. But I think it was a great experience getting to meet some of the other people, other mayors of different cities and discuss with them things they have going on. I think it was well worthwhile. Other thing I want to mention tonight is... Other thing I want to mention tonight is commercial rates again. I want to get this, Jim, on the agenda for next meeting. I feel like the little small businessman is getting creamed a little bit. I personally think that even though you're a commercial businessman, you don't use, you use a thousand gallons of water or less, you should be choosing maybe residential rate. And we have a commercial one and a commercial two. And I'm still not got it all straight in my head how exactly it works, which has to do with the course of gallons that you use. But I just want you all to be thinking about that because I have had some commercial people. I'm a small businessman and I know it. If I use eight hundred gallons, it costs me about the same thing as using four thousand in my house. You know, it's just, there's something in mind that people ask me about and I told them I'd bring it up and get it on the agenda for the next time. And something else we might want to talk about later is, you know, we had a problem one time with our trash pickup. Some people were taking advantage of picking up cardboard for people and different businesses around town. And a lot of times it had to do with stuff having to be separated. Because you can't take it all and just dump it in one place at the dump. But we did have some businesses that had just small amounts of stuff they put out. And, you know, we don't pick it up anymore. And I think we may want to look at this again and maybe do some picking up again of stuff that doesn't have to be separated. That's been brought to my attention and I told them I would talk about it and get it on the agenda for next time also.
All we pick up is yard waste.
Well, we used to pick up more and then we quit is what I'm saying. We used to pick up cardboard at different places, pallets, foam.
That's when we had landfill, they could just take it out there and drop it, I guess. But Tommy's out there, he can tell you more about that.
But we had Bruce that works with Waste Patrol, tell one of the commercial people, what he had out there could all be put in the same place, didn't have to be separated. And that's the kind of things I'm looking to see about maybe we can start doing for the small businesses that need that help.
Which is to talk about and see what we can do there.
Just a little cautious to tip the fees. You can't take it out. Play down door.
Something to talk about.
All right.
I just promised people I'd bring stuff up when they mentioned it to me. That's all I have, any other motions?
I made a motion.